Twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen city council meeting, and we'll start out with the road call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mijaski.
Here.
Caraballo.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Durantick.
Here.
Alder Weisinger is absent and excused.
Okay, thank you. The first.
Pardon me?
The first item on the agenda that I have is a proclamation for the utility director, Cardes, and I can meet you at the podium. How's that sound?
Fantastic.
Okay, so before I start, I want to thank many of the staff in City Hall and utilities for helping put together this proclamation. It was a team effort. It was led by Mary, our administrative assistant in City Hall, so we appreciate the help she put into this. So here we go. I'll try not to get emotional. Okay? I'm sure you'll do the same, right?
Absolutely.
Whereas Robert P. Cardes, affectionately known as Bob, is a proud native Stoughtonite after obtaining his professional engineering certification from the University of Wisconsin-Plattville, worked for the city of Milwaukee and then the Department of Natural Resources as a water specialist in the late nineteen seventies. It was Bob that ordered the city of Stoughton to rebuild its wastewater treatment plant. The city obtained state and federal construction grants and built a new treatment plant. Stoughton hired Bob one year later. Remember that? Returning him to his beloved Stoughton, and whereas Bob's management has led to significant improvements, the infrastructure for water, wastewater, and the electrical infrastructure to the benefit of the customers. Water system upgrades included a $600,000 gallon water tower constructed in 2010 that was financed in part through an ARRA grant of $575,000. I'm not sure what the acronym stands for.
It was Obama Fund. He was giving away money.
Oh, okay.
We got our pieces used.
As well as upgrading the two pressure zones to one zone to improve the flows and system pressures to customers, and whereas Bob's commitment to safe, reliable, and efficient utility services has not wavered since beginning serving as Director of Stoughton Utilities on February 11th, 1980, and whereas Bob, over his thirty-eight-plus years as Director of Stoughton City Utilities, was responsible for over 18 billion gallons of water pumped and treated. That would be the equivalent to all the water in Lake Tegana. And whereas Bob can always be found in his office before sunrise, working to remain current on issues affecting Stoughton Utilities, and whereas Bob's daily attire continues to include a tie, which he willingly shares a story about where it was acquired. Whereas Bob believed in utilizing advanced technology if it makes sense and provides an economic gain, most notably, Bob recommended and the city council approved an upgrade from a manual meter reading to an advanced radio reading system that has significantly cut operating costs. And whereas through Bob's leadership, Stoughton Utilities has received many awards, some of the most notable being the American Public Power Association's Safety Award of Excellence for Outstanding Safety and earning national recognition for utilities leadership and the use of renewable energy. Both the water and wastewater utilities purchased renewable power for 100% of the electricity needs, and whereas Bob's service to utility groups such as WPPI Energy, MEUW, Wisconsin Rural Association, Wisconsin Wastewater Operators Association, and the Wisconsin Chapter of American Water Works Association have made him widely recognized among utilities in Wisconsin and the Midwest region. And whereas Robert Cardes, Utility Director of Stoughton Utilities, has received the Rural Water Association's Lifetime Achievement Award. And therefore, I, Tim Swadley, Mayor of the city of Stoughton, would like to thank and honor Robert P. Cardes for all he has done and all that's taken place through his leadership at Stoughton Utilities and in our community, and for this, we are forever grateful.
Thanks a lot. I've got to thank Mayor Swadley, you, the council, and support team, city attorney and others, and previous mayors and previous councils. I can't say enough about the support you've given to the department and as the city as a whole. I understand the difficulties of being an elected official. I know it's tough. I've heard that often from previous alders and mayors. Oftentimes, I think people don't realize how much work you do. It's been enjoyable because there are a lot of new ideas coming out of this council, and new ideas are good ideas, and it keeps everybody on their toes and it makes people think. I'm tickled that we've got three leadership team members that have come out of the department. Two of them are still with the city, and I think that's good for everybody. It's been a pleasure. I really enjoyed it. I'll read about you often and occasionally watch you on television, but wish you all the best, and again, thanks an awful lot. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
We want you as far out of the picture as possible, Mayor.
You've got one more behind you.
Okay, thank you for everybody for coming tonight and being here to share this with Bob. The next item on the agenda is the 2019 road construction capital project presentation, and Public Works Director Abir is going to walk us through this.
Yep, so Mayor Swadley asked us to put this together to kind of showcase our 2019 proposed street construction projects. So Rodney and I will step through this and show you what it's all about. So, starting off, how are roads selected for resurfacing? One of our main tools that we use is our Pacer rating, which is a pavement surface evaluation and rating system that was actually put together by the University of Wisconsin. So essentially, it rates roads from ten to one, ten being essentially a brand-new road, one being a road that's turned to gravel. So the type of roadways, there's also consideration if it's a residential road or a collector. The traffic volumes would be a thing that we would consider, and also planned underground utility work, which we collaborate with Stoughton Utilities. We meet regularly with them, will continue to do so, because road, you know, work underneath the road goes hand-in-hand with these reconstruction projects. So here's a breakdown of the Pacer rating like I talked about. So excellent, you know, nine or 10, there's really no maintenance required, that's a brand-new road. Good is seven to eight, crack sealing and minor patching. So the crack sealing process essentially extends the life of the roadway. Five and six is a fair road, crack sealing and asphalt patching would be required. When you get down to the three and fours, it turns to a poor street, structural renewal is advised, so that's a mill and overlay or a pulverization. Sometimes it could be a reconstruction as well. Ones and twos are most likely reconstruction, and we'll go through what those different things are. Any questions on the Pacer ratings? We do those every two years, as required by the DOT. This is just a map. All of our Pacer ratings are in GIS, so Geographic Information Systems, and so we can take a kind of a high-level view of where we're at within the city as far as our Pacer ratings go. I know it's a little tough to make out the different colors within there, but essentially, the greens are good and the reds are bad, so. And the red with Highway 51, we didn't rate that because it's a connecting highway. We will be doing that in the future, but that one's really, it's not a road that we rated, so it's, although some areas are red because there almost is zero.
Tell us about that.
So here's kind of a breakdown of where we were from 2015 to 2017. We have seen some improvement in our overall ratings of our roads. Essentially, we've gained about 7% in our roadways that are fair or better, which is a good increase, and we look to continue doing that into the future. So different types of construction that we do. This is probably one of the more simple things is a mill and overlay. Typically, these are better-conditioned roads with a better base, but the surface is showing wear. So essentially, we'll take off, you know, an inch and three-quarters to two inches of the asphalt and do an overlay with asphalt and replace some curb and gutter, but not a whole lot. A full-depth pulverization would be roads that the curb and gutter is in good condition, the base is in good condition, and so we do a full-depth pulverization and stabilize the areas within the roadway that are, you know, the base is poor in some areas, but not all, and so this can help to stabilize that and also reshape the road. A lot of our roadways within Stoughton are relatively flat, and so that does not aid the water to get off the roadway, which deteriorates our asphalt faster. So we've been spending a lot of time to essentially move water off the asphalt into our stormwater Road reconstruction, which is one of the more costly things that we do when it comes to road repair, essentially, this is doing a full base-up reconstruction, so we take out the base or undercut, stabilize that, then add curb and gutter, new aprons, sidewalk, and then do essentially about a four-inch asphalt, so usually two inches and two inches. So we'll go through our streets that we're going to do this in 2019. The first ones are pulverization projects. Grant Street from Taft to McKinley, we're going to pulverize that and then do some corrections within McKinley intersection to aid our stormwater conveyance, and then do spot curb and gutter replacement. The total cost of the project is just over $115,000, which is an estimate. Here's a picture of Grant. As you notice, the pavement condition is poor. I didn't have a picture of the stormwater issues. McKinley, that's just to the south of this picture. Jackson Street, so essentially, this is a long stretch that this portion of road is in very poor condition. Essentially, a Pacer rating of three. This will go from Van Bierion all the way down to Kings Lynn, and we'll do spot curb and gutter replacement, and then spot sidewalk replacement as well. And also look at traffic calming devices because this is a relatively wide street and near the high school, and so that'll be a big focus of this project is look at different ways that we can calm traffic through here. Essentially, the project is a $541,000 project. Like I said, it is a major project, it's a long project, but it's well overdue. There's the pavement on Jackson, which you can see for yourself, it's in poor condition and it needs some help. Lincoln, just perpendicular to Jackson, again, near the high school, pretty much the same issues as Jackson. This is a Pacer rating of three, so this will be from Jackson all the way up to Eisenhower. Again, spot curb and gutter replacement, sidewalk replacement, and also on this one, we're going to look to improve some stormwater runoff from Holden Road. You got a pointer on this, this one?
Here's the pointer.
We're pointing yet. So essentially, it comes from Holden and then goes through the arboretum that the high school has, over the surface, and then drains across their grass. So we'd like to, we're going to look to pipe that into the system on Lincoln. This project is, has estimated price tag of $731,000. There's a picture. Again, same issues, the asphalt is deteriorating rapidly. We've tried to patch it the best we can, but it needs resurfacing.
So, I have a question. Hopefully, you're not going to do Lincoln and Jackson at the same time.
We would coordinate that, and it would be after the high school is finished for the year, and then we'd coordinate that with the contractor to make sure we still have access for our residents. And these are relatively, oh, I say, quick projects. When you do a mill and overlay or pulverization, they're relatively quick. It's not like a reconstruction where it's going to take all summer, so it could be a month, month and a half, but it's well overdue.
Oh, yeah, it's overdue. We know that.
And that would be coordinated with the residents to have them maintain access throughout the project. The next portion are our reconstructions, and Rodney will step us through those.
There's a number of streets that we're actually working in concert with Stoughton Utilities with some underground utility work. Lowell Street is planned to be reconstructed from Page Street to Monroe Street. That will also look at installation of sidewalk where there is some, needing some, as well as replacement, so that will be a full reconstruction. You can see the significant deterioration along the curb line on Lowell. Patterson Street is really the north end of a pretty major project. Patterson Street will have a total reconstruction from Monroe Street west to Harrison Street. There's anticipated some additional sidewalks to be installed there, as well as underground utilities, stormwater, wastewater, and sanitary sewer, I'm sorry, water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer improvements there at the same time. Pavement condition, again, is very poor. South Monroe Street, this is one of our major reconstruction projects planned for 2019 from Patterson to Lowell. So Patterson to Lowell, and then we'll do Lowell and Patterson also as part of our one major project. Again, underground utilities being dealt with, as well as sidewalk installation and replacement of curb and gutter and sidewalk sections in this area. Traffic calming measures would be evaluated, considered as part of the Monroe Street project as well. Glacier Moraine Drive, this is actually a new street. This is along the northern edge of the lands owned by the city of Stoughton. For those of you that are familiar, Williams Drive is on the left side of the screen. Business Park North entrance is here, NAF is constructed here. We have a contractual obligation to construct to this point by the end of 2020. We're hopeful that we'll see some development occurring on the remaining parcel of land here, and for efficiency and cost effectiveness, we'd like to be able to install that entire street segment as part of one project in 2019.
So now, when we put these roads together and rebuild them, now we've got to extend the life as much as we can. And so part of this CIP request has been, a request that's been in the budget for quite some time now, used to be $300,000. We've looked at different ways that we can minimize that cost, but still achieve, you know, our goal of extending the life of the roadways. And so that's to do crack sealing, which is our major, when it comes to extending the life, to seal those cracks so the water doesn't get in the base. That is key, number-one thing that we need to do. The last two years, we've crack sealed about 125 roadways within Stoughton, so we've caught up, and now we need to maintain where we're at. And also, we'll do spot asphalt replacement, and then also using our patching system, we would patch where we can. Any questions?
How do you package the bids? Are you able to package a lot of this together to get better bids?
Yeah, we'll likely be packaging the reconstruction projects as part of one major project, and likely the pulverization projects would be packaged as one separate bid project because the scope of the work is slightly different between those. Underground utilities are a major component of the reconstruction efforts, so you might see a different contractor that would be interested in that one. The pavement replacement or the pulverization-type projects, you may have an asphalt company that really takes a lead on a pulverization project where they may not on a reconstruction project.
And we're also working with Stoughton Utilities and our engineer to get the plans put together so we can get out to bid in January, early February, so we can get some more competitive bids. Last year, on one of our major projects, we had one bidder, which is not okay. So we're doing everything that we can to get the bids put together and bid package out as soon as possible. Go ahead. Thank you.
Alder Person, O'Connor.
Have you identified any properties that might have special segment, special assessment problematic areas like we've kind of had in the past?
We haven't prepared any of the assessment schedules. As we start looking at sidewalk infill, that's really where some of the special assessment areas become a concern. I can't anticipate any particular large retaining wall features on any of the streets that are needing infill of sidewalk at this point.
Okay. Second question I had was, how do you determine if the base is good or not, if it's underground or under asphalt?
Sure, do a core sample, and so we'll see what's underneath and can kind of assess what needs to happen in different areas, if it needs to be a full reconstruction or if we can undercut certain areas of the street.
Thank you. Alder Person, Riley.
Thank you. This is parochial in nature, but I have to ask anyway. The contractor did McKinley, and McKinley to Grant, and there's a problem there, correct? Because it does not properly drain away to the storm sewers. Is that right? Is that contractor going to be considered to do work again in these projects, do you know? Do you remember who it was?
I'm not sure of a contractor deficiency on a project.
I'll be happy to define it very thoroughly for you. I think you're aware of it, correct? Yeah.
But certainly, we look at, if there's been a contractor that we've had a historic problem with, certainly, that would be one that we'd have a challenge assessing them for a future project.
Sure, yeah. It's an issue at the very bottom of McKinley, and it's that the water does not, it pools up, backs up, and floods properties on the other side of the street, one of them being mine, actually, so I'm well aware of the issue. So I'm just, I'm kind of hopeful that that person doesn't get any more of our money, I guess, is what I'm thinking, honestly. Thank you.
And the biggest thing with that is looking at the entire project. Obviously, it was stopped in the intersection, and it didn't flow where it needed to go.
I know.
So you might not have been a contractor issue.
All right, thank you. Had to ask.
Alder Person, Johnson, and then Durantick.
Thank you. Your Honor. I just wanted to say, he was saying bad things about the contractors, whoever did our neighborhood were fabulous and very polite and conscientious, and they were just great to work with, so I just want to give you guys a feedback on that.
Great, thank you.
Alder Person, Durantick, and then we'll come back to you.
That area that Alder Riley is talking about has been a problem for a long time, and I hope you do check to make sure that the same contractor is not used because we, in the neighborhood, you know, called a number of times on that issue. But I also want to compliment you on having enough money in the preventative maintenance because 18 years ago, when I was first elected to the council, I looked at this whole area and found that if we put, at that time, it was a measly amount, $50,000 in prevention, that in the long run, we would save hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I mean, this is well worth, you know, working, you know, making sure we have this preventative maintenance. It saves us money down the road. So I want to thank you for having that fund and making sure it's there, and I want to thank the council, you know, for having enough foresight to have this fund in our CIP.
Alder Person, Riley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just quickly to make it clear, I wasn't intended to criticize either of you, of course, the contractor, I'm no fan of them, but the two of you are wonderful. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You guys are wonderful.
That's on tape.
It's on tape, yeah.
Any other, Alder Person, Bartlett.
I had it as a separate communication, but this ties into it. Just wanted to let everyone know that the Public Works Committee did meet and have discussions on changing the assessment ordinances for special assessments, policies for curb and gutter, sidewalks, and retaining walls. After a lot of discussion, we decided we needed to have a consistent message and keep a consistent policy and fairness, and that there was options for recourse, as we saw this year, it gets the extreme cost, the residents can come to the council and seek recourse. So we voted to not change the policy. Just wanted to get that out there.
Alder Person, Durantick.
Yes, but did you check the comp plan? Because last I knew, that the, what was in the comp plan and what's in our ordinance for sidewalks did not mesh, and so I would like the Public Works to actually take a look and make sure that the two are the same. And I also hope that we use common sense because, you know, some of these places don't need sidewalks on both sides. And again, the infrastructure cost to the city, as you can see from this, is tremendous. And so we have to also think about, you know, where we put sidewalks. I want, you know, I want sidewalks so people can be safe, but we don't have to have sidewalks everywhere. You know, you have to think about the cost to the city, not only, you know, putting them in, but then maintaining them. I mean, at the CIP committee meeting, Rodney, you know, said, "We don't have enough money to, you know, take care of the sidewalks that we already have because we've got sidewalks that are cracked and in disrepair." So, you know, and then you add on top of it all the streets that we have to maintain. This is huge, you know, budget money, you know, so, my two cents.
I agree.
Okay. That concludes that one. The next item is an update for McFarland State Bank. Attorney Dregney, I don't know if you have an update for us?
We don't have a report yet from the soil testing, so nothing to report tonight.
And they were there on site on September 10th to do the soil boring, so we anticipate shortly the results, and we'll pass them on as we receive them. The next item.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Thank you. What's our drop dead date again on that?
If I recall, it's October 15.
Okay, so we will have another council before then? Thank you. Thank you.
And then the next item is budget schedule, and I believe.
From Finance?
Yes.
Okay. In your packet, you have a tentative schedule, and Finance met this evening and directed the Finance Director to consolidate this to three dates, November, October 18th, October 25th, and November 1st. And Jamin will be sending out a revised schedule because the Finance Committee thought that we could get it done in three nights versus the four nights. I don't know how you folks feel about it, but anybody object to that?
Less meetings?
Denise, do you have an idea of time on that?
We're thinking probably about 6:00, but Jamin, when he sends out the schedule, will also send out the time, but probably 6:00.
Thank you.
So it's the 18th, 21st?
The 1st.
And Utilities, because Bob will not, will no longer be working for us on the 18th, the Finance Committee will review the Utilities budget and bring a recommendation to the committee of the whole. We figured that you guys would be probably okay with that.
Alder Person, Boersma.
Yes, Denise, I have on my schedule a public hearing for the budget at 6:00 on the 18th. Is that off now, or? Is that off now, or?
No.
Somehow that got on my schedule. I'm not sure how.
Well, I think that it may have come from one of the doodles because that was, you know, one of the dates, so.
So do you know about the public hearing, when that would be for the budget?
Well, I think the public hearing is at City Council. The first, the first meeting of November.
November 13.
Yeah, we'll send out the new dates, Sid, so that one will probably be changed. Or we'll have a meeting that night, but it just won't be the public hearing.
Okay.
Anything else on that one? Otherwise, any communications from council members before we move on to the agenda? Alder Person Borzma.
If you please, thank you. On Saturday, September 29th, 2018, which is this Saturday, we'll be honoring Stoughton Police Officer Paul Krabi with a special memorial service, which is now becoming an annual service, actually, at 4:30 PM at the Riverside Cemetery. With this memorial honoring Paul, we'll also honor and show appreciation to our various Stoughton Police Officers and Chief Leck, and also staff and volunteers representing first responders, EMS, and fire. Paul was killed in the line of duty in the mid-1930s. Paul Krabi exemplified service and dedication to his city, state, and country. He gave up his life in defense of our city and its citizens. Relatives from the U.S. as well as Norway will be coming for the weekend and for the graveside service again at 4:30. So with this, we honor our brother of the past and one who gave his life approximately 84 years ago.
Thank you. Chief Leck?
Just maybe to add and reiterate, we are having our annual awards banquet for the police department on Saturday night, 7:00. All the council members should have received an invite, and we'd be more than welcome to have you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other communications from council members? Seeing none, we'll move into our public comment period. Is there anybody signed up? Nobody signed up, but if anyone wishes to address the council, now is your chance. You have three minutes. Anybody like to speak to the council this evening? Seeing none, we'll go right into the consent agenda and be looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Duran six, a second by Johnson. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I don't think so.
Seeing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. There is no old business. New business is R. 162 of 2018, and that's coming from the library board. Is there somebody on council that serves on the library board that would like to report out?
I do. Yeah, this is a special resolution regarding exemption, again, from county library tax. And we discussed it at our library board meeting on September 19th. And if our library director could share with us.
Sure. And would you like to make the motion while he's coming on?
Oh, yes, I move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A motion, a second by Duran six, and go ahead, Richard.
Thank you. This is something that the library board and the council passes every year. This is one of three things we need to do to be exempt from the county library tax. The other things are, the library must meet minimum standards, we do that. And the other thing is that the city must support the library by a certain amount. That varies according to the size of the city. So we do this every year, and it's a great help to us. And actually, we get funding from Dane County then because of this. About a third of our funding from Dane County. Questions about this?
No questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you. And Resolution 163 of 2018. It looks like the next three are coming from Personnel.
Resolution R. 163-2018, Resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the compensation plan, including wage scale and process to progress through the steps. And I so move.
Second. I didn't hear who.
Pat.
Okay. Second by O'Connor. And go ahead, Alder Person Reeves.
So I think AJ is here to answer any questions, but we have previously approved this, and this is, again, still needs to go to budget, but we've conceptually approved the compensation plan, and AJ can answer any questions.
I'd like to have the team joined again. So we have put together a quick PowerPoint and, in regards to the compensation plan. If you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we gave a presentation of the entire plan to you, but we want to make sure that you understand tonight what we're actually going to be going over and what you're voting on. So the first thing that we're talking about, why we are here, is the wage scale matrix and step progression was presented to you guys, like we said, in August. It was reviewed by Personnel and approved unanimously on 9/13, and then sent to Personnel to council, which is what we're doing tonight, for final approval. Cindy, you want to take the next one?
This is the scale that you've seen when we talk about the, people are placed at a grade, and then this is the step progression that we had created, going from 15 down to 10, and then the percentages that are marked by the year increments.
Any questions on that one? Okay. Brett, do you want to take this one?
Sure.
Call you out.
You're ready.
Yep.
So essentially, Resolution R. 163-2018 approves the compensation plan, including wage scale and process to progress through the steps. It's noteworthy that this does not approve any increase in pay that'll be done through the budget process. Also, the step placement or right sizing that you guys have heard about, that will also be done through the budget process.
So all that you're being asked tonight is to put a plan in place so that we have the backbone of the structure there, so that when we get into the budgeting process, we have a way to apply that. So no dollars are tied to tonight, it's just the actual structure of having a wage matrix, and then, as we talked about, that progression.
Alder Person O'Connor.
Question that I have again, but different. So the financial impact of this would be barely, whereas as someone's progressing, if they're in step five today, they'll be step six next year, so that would be that increase.
There is no financial implication with this. All you're approving is putting a matrix into place with no dollars tied to it. We're saying that there would be a matrix.
Okay.
Correct. So there's no money on the table tonight, nothing being talked about financially, just saying that we would accept this matrix structure, and then how you progress through it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Alder Person Borzma.
I don't have a question, but just to clarify this, we have moved from one, from a number of steps to a lower number of steps.
15 to 10.
15 step instead of.
10 instead of 15.
10 instead of 15.
10 instead of 15. So it makes it, we talked about this at Personnel, it makes it simpler, easier. I think we looked at it as being more fair to both new employees and also those who have been on staff.
What we found, Sid, was the 15 years was not attainable in a typical employee's career span within the city. Brett?
I think it's also important to note that current employees are on a step, but there's no process to progress through the steps. And so this achieves that. Ever since the Springstead study was done in 2014.
1415, yep.
They've been on the same step. There's no way to progress through the steps.
So just to give you a little bit of history real quick, the first year, we had put in to place a matrix. And because we did not have the funding to provide what Springstead had originally projected for our matrix, we put a 15-step plan in place. After this team has looked at it, and we've also gone through several years, it was determined that we needed to reduce the number of steps. The other things that have occurred is many employees were not even in the step ranges initially, so that was one year's worth of changes. The next year, we moved leadership to midpoint, and now we're sitting where we have this plan, but we have no way to progress through it. So that's really what we're putting in place, is asking for the backbone. And then, when we go through the budget process, we'll determine, how do we apply dollars to this, and where do we place employees?
Just one more thing. At Personnel, we talked about, one issue that we, some of us were a little bit not understanding, was this whole notion of right sizing. Could you just really briefly talk about that?
Absolutely. Every employee, as we said, is on a step, but that step is not tied to anything other than either where their pay was closest to a step and/or bringing them into the step system. So what we're looking at through right sizing is to take the facts that we gave you last time, apply those to the employee based on their years of experience and their performance in regards to last chance agreements or performance improvement plans, and then appropriately place them on a step.
And that right sizing also applies to new employees, correct?
No. Right sizing is a one-time event for existing staff.
But what about employees who come in?
Employees coming in would be under the, they would be based on the plan.
Okay.
So this right sizing would occur one time, but that's not what's on the table tonight.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you very much. And the next one is R. 164, 2018, and this one also comes from Personnel. Alder Person Reeves.
Thank you. R. 164-2018, Resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to adopt the 2019 benefits renewal, medical, and dental plan, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Riley. Any discussion? Alder Person Reeves?
Well, AJ's here to just let us know a little bit about what that looks like and answer questions.
Okay. So I have a quick presentation and giving just a little bit of history. As I'm sure you've read about, in the marketplace, medical and dental costs continue to go up. And we are now in a HMO plan. We made that change, and we have, actually, as I put in bold there, we've experienced a reduction in our costs after implementing the HR department. So I just wanted to go through and give you a little bit of proof of what's going on. So if you take a look at the chart that I have here, you can see back in 2014 where our costs initially were at $17,144, I'm sorry, $17,144. And then we had a decrease of 6.73, which, again, that's when increases were happening in the double digits. The next year, we had a decrease of 10.34%. So again, not an increase, a decrease. And that's because we've been working hard on the plan, working with a broker that has a larger book of business, and we continued to decrease those costs in '17 and '18. So what you're going to see this year is, we had initially negotiated 9%, went back to the carrier and said, "That's not a real good number for us. We really need to work hard on this. Sharpen your pencil." They did so, and they lowered our number down to 5.95%. So our overall increase for 2019 is 5.95, and then we're budgeted a not-to-exceed number in 2020 of 9%. Any questions on that? This just shows you the chart versus trend, explaining and, again, showing the same illustration of our costs actually going down and that we're running below trend. And I just went through what those decreases in costs, what they were attributed to, and that's, first of all, I would really like to credit it to you guys investing in an HR department. We're negotiating it, we're not just taking a number from a broker, we're actually working with the broker trying to drive those numbers down. We made a broker change for the first time in, I think, the city's history. We left Tricor and went to Cottingham and Butler, and like I said, they have a larger book of business, and we have a really good relationship with them and a partnership. We were able to, when we were self-funded, have a third-party administrator. We were able to negotiate those fees down when we were self-funded, which was something that, again, just hadn't been focused on in the past. And stop loss, the same thing, we had our eye on that. We were watching what was happening with our stop loss, trying to drive costs down. And then the best thing that I think we did was making that shift from the self-funded to the HMO, so that you know what the costs are going to be. It's not driven by actual utilization, it's driven by what the costs are for the HMO overall. So our medical renewal process, like we said, was set at a 9% not-to-exceed. We were able to drive that number down to 5.95, which brings our premiums to the numbers that are shown here above. So we're currently at, for single per month, $552.92, and our renewal would be at $585.82. And then our family number was at $1437, going up 5.95 to $1523. So the total monthly premiums are listed there at the bottom. That's the number that we're looking at. What we are doing with our plan design is keeping it exactly the same. It's at market, 500 for single, 1,000 for family, and then we have the copays, and then the maximum out-of-pocket. So no changes to that. Our drugs are at $1035.60 and $200, and then we do have a generic plan that runs at $5. The plan change that we want to make for this year that was approved by Personnel was to move us from a two-tier plan, which you see on the right-hand side, and that's where I gave you the numbers for single and then family. And what we're wanting to do here is fairly distribute the cost. And what this does, based on underwriting, is we would have single, employee plus spouse, employee plus children, and family. Currently, we just have single and family. So we're asking to make that change, and again, that was approved by Personnel.
Alder Person Hurst.
Why is it cheaper for the employee and children versus the employee and spouse?
It's based on underwriting.
Okay.
So children are less expensive.
That one is employee and children without the spouse.
Correct.
Okay.
Spouse typically, if you look at just aging out, you're going to have higher medical. Any other questions?
Alder Person O'Connor, and then Boris Borzma.
So it'd look like negative in the impact, it would be the family rate structure?
Correct. Their premium will go up $11 additional per month for the employee.
11, oh, okay.
Their portion.
Thank you.
There's $11 a month impact for the family, and that's including the 5.95%. And then on top of that, the difference takes it up to $11.
And then the city would pay the difference?
The city pays the same exact amount they would have all along. There's no change there, the city portion going in.
Okay.
The only thing that's changing is the way it's split for those that are actually in the other plans. Okay?
Thank you. Okay. Alder Person Borzma.
You may be getting to this, thank you, your honor, but the hospitals that are singles and families and kids and all that can use, includes Stoughton Hospital or exclusively Stoughton Hospital? Could you explain that to us?
We're on an, we're on an HMO plan, so courts. So depending upon the services that are offered, yes, we, part of our plan is Stoughton Hospital, but not all services. And that's not controlled through us, that's between courts and Stoughton Hospital and Stoughton Clinic.
But you anticipate that most of our families will be able to get a large amount of their care from.
Well, this is no different than the plan we've had for the past 12 months. So whatever care they were getting before, they can continue to do it exactly the same in the future. There's no change there.
And I would tell you that AJ and I are both involved with the Stoughton Hospital's strategic planning process. There's a survey, and I think that anybody can fill them out. They had them at Lunch and Learn yesterday. So if you want to participate in that, you can contact the hospital to get input, especially the employees. If there's a service that you would like to have done locally and you're not sure whether or not they can provide it, you can certainly reach out to AJ or somebody at the hospital to find out. Alder Person O'Connor.
As a follow-up, is there a impact to represented employees in terms of changing the medical plan?
Just as, the same as any other employee. If they were on, there's a positive impact. If you were an employee plus spouse and you're paying, before you're paying the family amount, it's a positive impact because you're going to pay less. So those for family, they're going to pay $11 more, whether they're represented or unrepresented.
So it doesn't matter that, you don't have to negotiate that change?
No. Benefits are the city's benefits.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Those are all good questions. If you have any more, feel free to reach out to AJ. She loves to answer some questions about health insurance. I don't get it, but she does.
I've got a couple more things here, just to show you the utilization real quick. Under the four-tier, it shows where the distribution and the number of employees. So 39 employees from family to the four-tier family will be affected by this, and that's the $11 additional per month. So the decisions that I'm asking for you tonight are to renew with courts at 5.95%. Yes or no? The decision by Personnel on 9/13 was unanimous vote of yes. And then the second thing is, stay with the existing two-tier or switch to the four-tier. I strongly recommend the four-tier so that the costs are distributed as they should be. And again, Personnel supported that with a unanimous vote to switch to the four-tier.
Alder Person O'Connor.
Was there any feedback from employees? Were they?
On that? Yeah, this has already been sent out to the staff, they see it. I had one individual represented send an email saying that it's a twenty-six percent increase, well, that actually equates out to eleven dollars. So, I think an eleven-dollar increase is definitely within market, if not, as I've shown in the past, our increases have been below market, so, other than that, I think people understand it.
Very good. Thank you. Alderperson Bartlett.
Couple slides ago on the tier comparison slide, you had twenty-nine in the employee and spouse, and employee and children in the four-tier. Where were they on the two-tier? Were all those in the family plan?
Correct.
Thanks.
Yep. So, they're going to see cost decreases.
Yep.
Okay, if no more questions, then I'll quick move on to medical. We have a flat renewal for two thousand and nineteen. This is a self-funded plan, just so everybody's aware of that. The monthly cost is thirty-one fifty-three, and family is eighty-eight forty-one. Our participation is twenty-eight singles and seventy-four families, and the recommendation here is no change. There actually was a little bit of a decrease in costs, but again, being self-funded, I don't want to make any changes at all, I would like to just keep it flat, and what I'm asking for here is that you give us the approval to move forward with the dental plan as is in two thousand and nineteen. So, final decisions would be the five point nine five percent for courts, moving to the four-tier, and then the final on being the dental plan for renewal.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderperson Bozma.
I just hope to, that council would approve the dental plan without pulling teeth.
All right. Seeing no more questions, there is a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Next one is ordinance twenty-two of two thousand and eighteen, which is a first reading. That one comes from Personnel as well.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty eighteen, amending sections two dash two eight six, two dash two eight seven, and seventy-four dash four of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the Utilities Director and ISO move.
It's a first reading.
Oh, that's right, we can't, never mind that, first reading.
Alderperson Jansik.
I have two questions. How, how has the ordinance changed, and did the committee review the position description for the Utilities Director?
Do you want to?
Yeah, well, so, that's how, that's how this came to our attention, someone brought it to our attention, that the way that the ordinance is currently written, is that the Utilities Director shall be under the direct supervision of the Utilities Committee. That's not how it has been in practice, and so, there was a recommended change, because the Utilities Director, based on the job description and day-to-day practice, actually reports to the mayor, so, that's how that came to be.
And then, we also sent it to the city attorney for his review? Go ahead.
Yeah, and the ordinance I sent to the city clerk was in a redlined format, so I'm not sure why the one in the packet's not redlined, but I can go through the changes. So, under section two dash two eight six, as it is currently drafted, this is the first part of the ordinance, section one. It currently, the last sentence is rather confusing, it says, "The appointment of the Utilities Director," I'm sorry, "the appointment of the Utilities Director shall be for a probationary period of one year, comma, when he shall hold office for an indefinite term, comma, subject to removal as provided by, with Stat Section seventeen point twelve one C." That's what it says today. I was concerned about that, because by inserting text indicating that the appointment would be for probationary period of one year, that creates the impression that that means, once you've completed the probationary period, then you may have some kind of a contractual interest in your job, and I don't think that's what's intended here. So, I revised it to say, what I think what is intended, which is, "The Utilities Director shall serve at the pleasure of the common council, subject to removal as provided by Section seventeen point twelve." That statute says that if someone is appointed by the council, the person can be removed by the council. So, that's change number one. Change number two, section two dash two eight seven currently says that the Utilities Director shall be under the direct supervision of the Utilities Committee, and perform such duties as the city council, city council and the Utilities Committee designates. And I was asked to change that to indicate that the Utilities Director shall serve under the direct supervision of the mayor, and shall perform such duties as the city council designates. So, as I understand that language, the city council will approve the job description, will approve the duties that the Utilities Director has, but on a day-to-day operational basis, the mayor is the direct supervisor of the Utilities Director. Third, is just kind of addressing the same issue, the current ordinance under seventy-four dash four indicates that the Utilities Director shall charge the electric utility, wastewater utility, and the water utility under the supervision of the common council. I changed that to say, under the direct supervision of the mayor. So, those are the changes.
Anybody have questions about the changes? Alderperson Bozma.
Could I just make one suggestion, that we, I noticed you talked about he, we should really.
There was the old one. I took that out.
Okay.
Yep.
And for some reason, sometimes when we translate these, the PDF doesn't pick up the redlines. I'm not really sure what that is.
Sorry about that.
But we'll, we'll double-check, and when we bring it back at the next meeting, we'll make sure that's in there. Anybody have any questions about the changes, or AJ, did you have anything as far as process you want to talk about?
No, that's exactly what we were asking for, and we had talked about at our, our meeting in the early morning that we had with the group, was to have the position reporting to the mayor.
So, what we're trying to do is, since the ordinance is a two-step process, and then we also have the job description, which, when it's updated, needs to be approved by the council, is to get all those items dealt with, so when we go to post a position, we're ready to go here in the next couple, three weeks.
Monday night, Personnel will be meeting to review the job description.
Alderperson O'Connor.
Did you want to expedite this, to approve it tonight, or does it make any difference?
I don't know if it's necessary, but, I mean, it can come back at the next meeting, and we'll still be within our timelines, because we'll be bringing the job description back at the next meeting with it.
Cool.
Any other questions or comments? Like I said, this is a first reading, so we'll move on to the next one, which is R. one sixty-five of two thousand and eighteen, and this one came from the Finance Committee, and I think you were gone that meeting, weren't you?
Yeah, but I, I can read it.
Okay.
So, on September eleventh, the Finance Committee met and recommends the council approve R. one sixty-five dash twenty eighteen, resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the listing of the vacant property located adjacent to Business Park North by Lee and Associates, and ISO move.
Second.
And it's a motion by Jansik, and a second by Jensen. Any discussion on this one? Denise, or Pat, or myself, it doesn't matter. Basically, what we did is, earlier when we were going through the presentation, you saw Glacier Marine Drive Road, what we're talking about is that emptied lot, which is about eighteen point three acres, and what we really need to do is get that lot sold, so we can create a building, which will create increment to pay off the loan, to pay for the road. So, for whatever reason, the property has never been marketed, maybe internally at most, so what we want to do is hire a real estate firm, a commercial firm, to come in, list a property, and hopefully sell it. So, we solicited three proposals, and the recommendation from the Finance Committee was to go with Lee and Associates.
Alderperson Riley.
Thank you. Was there any consideration of what the various listing agents thought the property should be listed at, what, what the price would be, or?
Yeah, I think there was something in the proposals, and this particular one, I think they were talking forty thousand an acre, which is about what we paid for it, and there was another one that had a range, that was, the range was below that and above that, and then I don't remember what the third one said, but we, we believe that at the committee level, that this firm here has some ties with Stoughton, has some other property listed, has been in the business for a long time, and hopefully will give us the best opportunity to sell the lot and get it developed. Any questions on this one? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Next one is R. one sixty-six of two thousand and eighteen. This one's coming from Public Works. Alderperson Bartlett.
From Public Works, Resolution one sixty-six twenty eighteen, resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to update the fee structure at the New Yardway site located at one one zero one Collins Road in the city of Stoughton. Public Works approved four to nothing on September twentieth, I move to approve.
Second. And a second by O'Connor. Alderperson Bartlett.
Ask Director Public Works to comment on this. So, in two thousand and nineteen, we're looking to open our composting facility on Collins Road. Currently, we take our compost material to Troutman Farm, they have, they're selling the farm essentially, and so we're looking to utilize the acres that we bought last year to do composting, as well as to have be our new yardway site. Currently, we're under contract with Dunkirk through the end of the year to utilize their site for yard waste material, brush, and other yard waste. And so, essentially, we'd like to, as, creating our own site, we would essentially charge our residents the same amount, which is twenty dollars per year. We'd also like to invite others, Dunkirk residents, other non-residents, to use the site as well, but we feel like there should be a fee associated with that, because currently, our residents pay twenty dollars, and Dunkirk residents don't pay anything. And we incur all the costs to operate the facility, so we think it's only fair that if we're going to be operating our own facility within the city, that we charge an amount for non-residents, which is twenty-five dollars. And so, essentially, that, that aims to recoup our costs to operate the facility, and not necessarily to make a profit.
Alderperson Johnson, Bozma, and O'Connor.
I got a question, so, when we brushed down there, we paid a fee, and Dunkirk people didn't have to pay?
That's part of the contract, so we're like, we're looking to get rid of that contract and start our own composting facility, as well as yard waste site.
But we're charging them five dollars more, or how much?
When we open the new site, we're asking that we charge non-residents, not necessarily Dunkirk, but any non-resident using the site, an extra five dollars, because essentially, our taxpayers are paying for, you know, the implementation of this program, so it's only fair that non-residents would pay an increased amount.
How is the city paying for the implementation?
Well, through the Public Works building, we bought fifty-five acres, I think it was in two thousand and seventeen or eighteen, and essentially, we got to put a road in to the site, which we're doing in-house to save dollars.
Or just for the composting?
Composting and yard waste, because if we didn't do that, we essentially have to haul that to Dane County and pay, you know, tipping fees to dispose of our compost material.
Right.
So, we're going to be saving money in the long run by keeping it in-house, there's no doubt in that.
Okay. I just don't want to make them really mad.
Well, I think it's fair, so I think it's fair that if our residents are charged a fee, that they would be charged a fee as well. But that's up to you to decide.
Okay.
Alderperson Bozma, and then O'Connor.
And I might point out with Brett, that we, we have been paying the labor, or the service on that site for the time that we've been on Collins Road too, so those are, those two employees are our employees.
So, part of the contract we have currently is, our current site is in Dunkirk, and we pay for essentially the grinding costs of all the brush, which is ten thousand dollars per year. We pay for the staff, which is about seven thousand dollars per year, and we have some administrative costs, printing, in-house costs, so we're looking to recoup those costs and have everybody pay their fair share.
Thank you.
Alderperson O'Connor.
Will commercial entities be able to use it?
Same as it is now, they will not.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Resolution one sixty-seven of two thousand and eighteen comes from the mayor's office, and I'd be looking for a motion to confirm my request to unappoint Amy Call and approve citizen appointment Duran Bradford to the Police and Fire Commission pursuant to two dash one twenty-seven of the Municipal Code.
I move to approve.
A motion by Bozma, a second by Jensen. Any discussion on that one?
It says Doreen Bradford. You've already changed it on the cap.
Yeah, yep, that's correct. Alderperson Riley.
Thank you. In the vein of you say potato and I say portato, it looks like Ms. Call's name is spelled differently at the top and at the bottom, it's K-A-H-L, and then, be it resolved, it's K-O-H-L, if I'm not mistaken.
We'll correct that.
Thank you, that's all. I just had so much fun pointing that out that I.
You're on your toes.
There you go, man.
How is it spelled?
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? A motion to adjourn by O'Connor, and a second by Jensen. Any discussion?
Yeah, there's a million around at five.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?